Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council, please come to order with the call of rule, please, to establish a quorum.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Ashby?
Here.
Councilmember Laloie?
Here.
Councilmember Harris?
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Here.
Councilmember Shenier?
Here.
Mayor Protem Geta?
Here.
Councilmember Jennings?
Here.
Councilmember Vang?
Here.
And Mayor Steinberg?
I am here. Good evening, everyone. Let us begin with the land acknowledgement. I would ask Council Vice Mayor Ashby if she would, this afternoon as well, if you would do the land acknowledgement and also the pledge of allegiance, please. Thank you.
Sure, Mayor. If everyone would please stand for the land acknowledgements. In honor of Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal lands, to the original people of this land, the Nisanan people, the Southern Maidoo Valley and Plains Miwok, Pakwinwin Tu peoples, and the people of the Wilton Rancheria, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe, may we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather together today in the active practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous people's history, contributions, and lives. Thank you. And then Mayor, you can, let's do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you again, Vice Mayor, for leading on both, both at two and at five on the landing. I appreciate that. Members, before we get to the consent calendar, Councilmember Laloie asked me, for an exception to the general rule that we do adjourn in memories at the end of the meeting, and I wanted to grant him that privilege. While he was taking it, I wanted to do an adjourn in memory upfront as well, because I think any loss is significant, but these two losses in our community are especially significant. Councilmember Laloie, why don't you go first?
Mr. Mayor, thank you so much. It's, I wanted to take this time to honor the life and legacy of Mr. Bob Bastain. He has served the North Sacramento community for decades, wearing many hats. He was a Grand High Pacer, he was an educator, a mentor, volunteer, and a Twin River Unified School District Board trustee. He was a community leader, and he was dearly loved by many. I didn't get the opportunity to spend much time with Bob, but nevertheless, I have been inspired by the life he led and the memories he leaves behind. It's amazing, Mr. Mayor, and it's truly amazing. Through the last few weeks, whoever I talk to, whether it's the parents, different board members, even teachers, they've all talked about what an inspiration Mr. Bastain was. I would like to bring Board President Michelle Rivas on the line to make a brief comment on behalf of the Twin River Unified School District and the community. Ms. Rivas?
Thank you, Mr. Lali. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council for recognizing Bob's passing. I know many people I'm looking at on the screen have worked with Bob over the years, the mayor, Mr. Jennings, Ms. Ashby, many public events. Bob was truly a public servant, and he spent, I'm sorry, I was going to get to this, he spent his last full day on this earth participating in the school board meeting. He died doing what he loved to do, which was representing the students in Twin Rivers. He had a special place in his heart, especially for our special ed students. Bob was a teacher, a special education, and I can't tell you how many community events I've gone to over the years where I have met now adults who went to school in the then railroaded school district saying, "Do you know Bob? Tell Bob I said hello. I'm doing well." He was a man of passion and compassion, and in the 14 years that we served together, I never heard that man say a bad word about anybody. Bob's motto in life was like, "Well, Michelle, let's just get through this in a positive manner," and that's how he conducted himself, always with the students in the North area first and foremost. So, again, on behalf of the board and the district and our students, thank you all very much for recognizing him tonight.
Michelle, thank you, and Councilmember Laloie, thank you. He was a really special man, very decent, dignified, caring, all the things that you both said. Thank you. We'll remember him. We'll adjourn in his memory at the end of the meeting, but I thought it was appropriate that we start that way tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I'll excuse myself. I have a board meeting that I need to get to, so thank you all very much, and be well, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me do the same here, because we are all, not to be too Pollyanna, but we're all brothers and sisters here, whether we're colleagues, whether we are, whether we're city residents, whether we're residents of this region, and our family, our region's family suffered a tremendous loss this last week with the death of Elk Grove Motor Officer Ty Lenahan. As you know, he was involved in a traffic collision involving a wrong-way driver on Highway 99. Ty joined the Elk Grove Police Department six years ago. He also worked for Galt in the Citrus Heights Police Department, was an Air Force veteran. He served, and he served. He became a motorcycle officer for Elk Grove in 2020. And even more poignant for the city of Sacramento, Officer Lenahan leaves behind a wife, Jessica, and two children, and Jessica is a Sacramento police officer. The Lenahans are part of our city family. We grieve with the Elk Grove Police Department. The loss of a public servant, but especially the loss of a public servant who is charged with providing public safety is especially tragic, especially in such a mindless way that he died. And Chief Lester, in your early weeks as the police chief of this city, you have demonstrated, as you always do, your big heart, and your caring for your fellow officers and their families, because I know you have been right there in Elk Grove, supporting the Elk Grove Police Department, as well as supporting your own department, who are grieving because of the loss of not only Ty, but the fact that he leaves behind his wife, one of Sacramento's finest, Jessica. So, thank you. We all just want to tell the people of Elk Grove, Mayor Bobby Singh Allen, the council members, the police department, that we'd do anything for you. We would do anything for you in your time of grief, and we want to let you know that we are thinking of you in every way. Chief Lester?
Thank you, Mayor. I really appreciate it, and I know that the officers that have been working with Elk Grove, you know, in this very, very trying time, will also appreciate that. Thank you for the kind comments and for the recognition. It means a lot to us. Thanks.
Thank you. We'll adjourn in Officer Lenahan's memory as well, and keep his family, especially Jessica in our hearts tonight. Let us move on with the business of the city and start with the consent calendar. Are there?
Uh, Mayor, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, Madam City Attorney, and you reminded me, too. I'm so sorry. We do have a report out of closed session. Yes, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I wanted to report out that the city council has opted to join the National Opioid Settlement and the National Prescription Opioid Litigation, United States District Court, Northern District of Ohio, case number 17, MD 2804, MDL number 2804. That's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. That's good. All right, now we get to the consent calendar. There are items on the consent calendar that members would want to take up separately or to discuss. I'm trying to see if there are any hands up. I do not see any.
Mayor, I'll move the consent calendar.
Thank you, Councilmember Jennings. Moved by Councilmember Valenzuela. Do we have public testimony on the consent calendar?
Mayor, I show no hands raised to make public comment on the consent calendar.
All right, then, let's vote. Please call a roll.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Ashby.
Yes.
Councilmember Laloie?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilmember Shenier?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Geta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. That passes nine to nothing. The quickest consent calendar in modern city history. Maybe not, but seems like it. Okay. Let's now move to item 12, which is our first discussion item of the evening. Who is presenting on this?
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg. Members of the city council, my name is Jose Quintanilla, Associate Planner with the Community Development Department. I hope you're all doing well. The item before you, P 2001-2, Orchard Lane Alcohol Conditional Use Permit is a request for a conditional use permit, or CUP, for alcohol sales. This item is an applicant appeal of the Planning and Design Commission's denial of the requested entitlements on June 10, 2021. The project site is an existing gas station located at 2701 Orchard Lane in Council District 3, formerly District 4, at the southwest corner of West El Camino Avenue and Orchard Lane in the Camino Station Plan Unit Development in South Natomas. The site is shown in yellow on the map on screen. This area is predominantly single in multi-unit developments, including the recently constructed 300-unit Corne Toma apartments and the 554-unit Cove Residential Subdivision. To the east of the site is vacant land Interstate 80. Across the street to the north, at the northwest corner of the West El Camino and Orchard Lane intersection, is an approved commercial project, the River Oaks Marketplace, which has entitlements for two drive-through restaurants and a convenience store and gas station with ancillary quick-service restaurants. Within a quarter mile of the subject site are two schools, shown in orange on the map displayed on screen, and three city parks. Two Rivers Park is adjacent to Two Rivers Elementary School. Orchard Park is adjacent to Leroy Green Academy, a sixth grade to 12th grade school. And Cove Park is adjacent to the Cove subdivision. There is an additional park within a third mile of the site, Sally Hudson Park. The Sacramento River is approximately a half mile to the south of the subject site. This site has a long history requesting alcohol sales permits and community opposition to such requests. The Planning Commission granted the subject site a special permit for a 16-nozzle gas station, convenience store, and ancillary car wash in 2006. This project initially included a request for alcohol sales, but the request was withdrawn prior to application submittal after community opposition and preliminary review comments from planning staff. A similar request for alcohol sales was submitted in 2009 and similarly withdrawn in 2010 after community opposition. The current request for a conditional use permit for the sale of beer and wine for alcohol consumption is within an existing convenience, gas station convenience store. The applicant states that with increasing vehicle fuel economy, customers are making fewer gas station visits, and alcohol sales would provide additional revenue streams for the station to offset increasing staff and maintenance costs. Most comments we have received in opposition, most comments that we received were in opposition to alcohol sales at this site. Opposition letters were received from the Natomas Unified School District, the River Oaks Community Association, and other community groups that are active in South Natomas. Opposition letters sent to staff can be found on page 92 of the staff report. Letters in support of the project can be found starting on page 196. All communications received after the publishing of the staff report were provided as supplemental materials to the council and posted on the agenda page for tonight's hearing. This request was heard by the Planning and Design Commission on June 10, 2021. Staff recommended that the Planning and Design Commission deny the requested CUP based on the number of sensitive uses in the area, as well as the community opposition that surrounds this project. After denial, the applicant subsequently appealed the decision. Staff position remains the same. Based on the number of sensitive uses surrounding the subject site, staff recommends the city council deny the applicant's appeal and deny the conditional use permit request. Thank you. This concludes my presentation. Staff and the applicant are here. Should there be any questions? I would like to now turn it over to the applicant and appellant, who has prepared a presentation.
Right, thank you. Who is the applicant here?
Thank you, Mayor Steinberg, members of the council. I'm Tom Barrett. I'm counsel for the applicant. I would like to take a moment, if you can hear me, hopefully you can hear what I'm speaking to. Thank you. Would like to take a moment to actually introduce a representative of the owners group, Mr. Doddwall, who I had asked actually to speak to the economic reason, the financial, you know, purposes for their application in the first place, and then I will go through a series of six slides and some additional material. I anticipate about 10 minutes or so to present our position and our request for the council. So I would, at this point, ask Mr. Doddwall to speak to you for a brief bit. Open?
Are you on the Zoom link?
Let me look and see, actually. I apologize. I'm going to see if he shows up.
Mr. Doddwall is still listed as an attendee, and needs to be promoted to a panelist.
Okay, sometimes we have technology problems, but we'll figure it out.
In order to avoid further delay, I'll ask him to make statements at the end, then.
Okay, why don't you give your part of the presentation first?
Will do.
He's been promoted to a panel.
He's here.
Sorry.
Just in the nick of time. Here we go. All right.
Hi. First of all, I'd like to thank you all for giving us this opportunity to make a case. I just wanted to mention a couple of things. One of the reasons why we are applying for this license, so we got the site January 29, 2020, and then a month later, we went into a lockdown. And since then, before, when we got the station, we were selling 13,000 gallons of gas a day, and since COVID, we're selling about 7,000. Our store sales have gone down 50%. And, you know, luckily, because of all the government assistance at the beginning of the pandemic, we were able to survive making our payments, and now that those benefits have stopped, we need to look for other ways to generate some revenue so that we can continue making our payments and continue having full staff to provide a quality service here. And, excuse me, and then another thing I wanted to mention was, to satisfy the community concern, we are willing to, you know, lock all the doors, keep them locked, all the beer. We're not selling any beer after 10 o'clock. We're selling beer, soon as six pack and up. So if there's anything else, any concerns that ROKA HOA has, that they want to put any conditions, we're willing to meet that. You gotta remember, at 10 o'clock, we're not selling any alcohol. 11 o'clock, we actually close the door. It's window service only. And if you, any of you guys have been through this area, you know this is a very high-quality gas station, very properly managed, manicured, and everything. Great service. So I just wanted to mention a couple of those things, and I'll let you go ahead. Tom, make the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Steinberg, I'm going to share my screen to start off.
I guess, how do I, sorry, how do I give the control back to you?
I've got it.
Oh, you got it. Thank you.
Hopefully, let me see if this focuses in, that you can see my screen. Jose, do you see that?
Yes, we can see it.
Okay, thank you. So this is an aerial view from the north, looking down toward the ARCO station in the foreground, and then the community is behind here. And so just to orient you to a visual of what was presented by Jose with the overhead map. Now, the staff recommendation with respect to this, their recommendation for denial is based on General Plan Policies 2.11 and 2.12, et cetera, as I've indicated in paragraph one, that regard primarily new physical development to avoid difficulties with that. I wanted to orient the council or remind folks that there are actually land-use policies within the general plan that support the application specifically in this instance. As you can see, some of these general policies encourage land use that promotes walking services and a fair distribution of retail within a complete neighborhood, and frankly, of course, to try to eliminate dependency on automobiles. Many of, at the Planning and Design Commission, the PDC level, many of the comments in support of this application were from neighbors, frankly, that wanted to have access in a walking distance from their home to the beer and wine sales. But even beyond the general plan issues, specifically for an alcohol sales conditional use permit, there are these findings and considerations defined by Reg 17.228.108. The four findings at the top are the ones that the staff report addresses, and of course, the only one that the staff report focuses on or that identifies as a reason for denial is this issue of whether it adversely affects the peace and general welfare to approve this application. Considerations specifically called out by the regulation are any adverse effect on nearby residential or distance to sensitive uses, and sensitive uses are listed, of course, to include residences, churches, schools, hospitals, parks, childcare, and similar uses. The hours of operation, quantity and size of containers, alcohol content, et cetera, are other considerations. Frankly, the applicant's agreement to comply with the police, Sacramento Police Department, conditions answer all of those issues in item 2B on this slide. Now, hopefully all of you had a chance to read the letter and the attachments that I submitted to Jose for inclusion in the agenda packet. I wanted to provide that information because it's fairly detailed. Dr. Murray from UC Santa Barbara provided an analysis, a spatial analysis, and actually, Dr. Murray is attending this meeting. If any of the council members may have questions about his charts, his analysis. But I wanted to summarize basically his findings from his analysis. He looked at all permitted sites in the city, both, you know, all, both type 20 and 21, as well as specifically those sites that are gasoline stations that also sell alcohol. And from his analysis, this particular location is not as close to schools and parks as other sites, and it's relatively average. It's in the middle of the curve with respect to nearby residential, which indicates, of course, there are many other sites around the city that are right in the middle of residential, and it's relatively distant. This site is relatively distant from other similar licensed locations. And the question was posed recently to me, besides just the distance to the nearest sensitive use, how many sensitive uses are in the vicinity of this site? Because staff report focuses on the two schools and the three parks within a close distance, and so the question, it was really posed, how many of these sites around the city that have been permitted in the past actually compare or have similar multiple sensitive uses nearby? And I picked out, as examples, items two through seven on this slide. You'll see at 2838 J Street, there are two parks, both within .07 miles, very close, two schools from Sacramento City Unified, .18 and .21 miles away, a hospital is across the street, a church is a quarter mile away, and two other off-sale sites, permitted sites, are directly nearby this location. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard location has two parks and open land within close proximity, one school and one church. The 4,000 Southland Park is, has two parks within very close proximity, .04 and .11, two schools, one church, and residences surrounding. It's across the street from another licensed position, location. Fruit Ridge Boulevard has two schools at .18, .34 miles away, one park, two churches, and again, across the street from another licensee. 600 Rio Tierra, two schools, two churches, vacant land, residences surrounding, and two other licensees within one block. 2221 Del Paso, two schools, including Intercom High School and Natomas Park Elementary, and relatively close, and three parks and vacant land in close proximity. So I would point out that the staff report is reaching the conclusion that this site is adverse to peace and general welfare of the region, of the neighborhood, without distinguishing these other locations that are representative sampling of other sites around the city. Now, with respect to the peace and general welfare piece, the item, that consideration, that finding, the opposition really has come from the River Oaks Community Association and the Natomas Unified. I, in my practice, have represented the Natomas Unified on other matters in other prior years. I don't currently represent them, but I have it on, frankly, good authority that the Natomas Unified School District will essentially back up the neighborhood. So if the neighborhood were to support or allow under conditions, then the Natomas Unified, I anticipate, would follow. But looking specifically at the opposition by the Neighborhood Association, with respect to any claim that alcohol sales may occur to students, there's no evidence of that and no particular specific claim to support that. At the PDC, one of the commenters from ROKA indicated they're not really concerned about the alcohol sales. They're concerned about traffic, increased traffic, but there's actually no evidence of increased traffic from allowing limited, very limited beer/wine sales at this existing ARCO. The concern about homeless and loitering, there's no evidence presented about that being any problem that occurs at this site. And in fact, the evidence supports that the owners, current owners, directly monitor, and they've corrected and reported loitering in vacant lots in prior years. I think there haven't been any recent incidents, but on a prior incident, they corrected it immediately. There's a claim by the opponents that this, that allowing this use permit would undermine an agreement, it's been phrased, between ROKA, presumably, or the city, and River Oaks Marketplace regarding no alcohol. The development directly across the street, across Del Paso, that in the future has agreed, as I understand it, not to sell alcohol in the 7-Eleven, and whether that's an agreement with ROKA or with the city, it's either an enforceable private-party agreement or just a choice of the developer in the process of seeking approvals for their development in toto. in the process of seeking approvals for their development, the development in toto. And that decision by the developer across the street should not be binding on this applicant who's facing these economic circumstances. And then the final point is, and most significantly or fairly significantly, ROKA has consistently argued that the, that the application here is contrary to a prior agreement of the actual, the original developer of the station. And I want to point out that the applicant acquired this Arco from a second owner, which purchased, the second owner purchased this station by an online auction after the original developer went bankrupt. I don't know the circumstances why the original owner went bankrupt, but after that bankruptcy, it was, it was, you know, a purchase without any passage of information to the new, the second owner, and then these owners bought it as Ball indicated at the end of January in 2020 with no knowledge, either actual or constructive knowledge about this prior agreement of the original developer not to seek alcohol permit. And then, of course, as Ball pointed out, this business has been hit by COVID two months later and is, is, is trying to address that economic reality. Another consideration, of course, specifically with respect to peace and general welfare, has to do with the element of crime and safety. I've mentioned that the police requirements have all been agreed to by the owners. Sergeant Young from the Police Department spoke at the second PDC meeting. There were actually two PDC meetings. In the first one, the PDC disagreed with the staff recommendation of denial. And the second one, then the, the PDC changed and agreed with the staff recommendation of denial. But at the second meeting, Sergeant Young said, among other things, that nothing jumps out from the crime stats about the effect of beer and wine sales on crime. There's no data, he said, regarding adverse effects of beer and wine sales in close proximity to schools. He focused on and emphasized that the quality of the site management affects the level of risk of, and he did point out that there's always some limited risk of nuisance crimes, loitering, etc., with sale of alcohol. But I, he, he was careful, correctly so, to point out that the, the level of management quality affects that and can mitigate that risk. I'd like to shift briefly before my final slide to another screen. I think it'd be best if I just stop sharing on this one and then come back to this. Let's see if I can do that. Hold on a second. No, let's see. I'm having technical difficulties myself. Let me go on. What I was going to show, there's a sampling of crime maps and I'll hopefully get to it maybe in rebuttal or at the end. So I don't waste your time here trying to get to that other screen. If you look at a sampling of crime maps.
I'm going to ask you if you could consider wrapping it up, please.
Yes, sir.
Not, we don't, we don't put time limit on an applicant, but I think it's time to wrap it up. Thank you.
Yes. So let me go to actually my final screen here, which I would ask you to consider as reasons for approval of the appeal. Number one, the economic sustainability issue is consistent with city policies and these considerations on the COP. At item 1C, you'll see that the owner has a reputation. This owner has a reputation for a well managed store. Commissioner Jung at the PDC meeting in June specifically commented on that fact. And the owners, as I pointed out in two, have agreed to comply with the police conditions. The proximity to sensitive uses is not significant compared to other sites. The neighborhood opposition is unfounded. Essentially, it expires of change in the neighborhood without any particular point, pointing to any evidence that it could create problems. The other, an approval of this application would not be binding precedence on other potential applications if the other developer across the street came asking for an alcohol use permit. And finally, as Ball indicated, the owners intend to support the neighborhood and schools and mitigate any possible risks. The owners intend to provide fundraising opportunities for the schools and to lock the cabinet for the beer sales in order to avoid risks. And frankly, one of the most frustrating things was the refusal of the ROKA to, organization to meet with or discuss potential additional mitigation. These owners would be very interested in working with ROKA to address any other specific concerns. But from an early stage of this process, they refused to meet. I appreciate your time and attention. I'd ask for your support to approve the appeal. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for the presentation. I'd like to ask Councilmember Valenzuela to take the floor for a moment. Councilmember Valenzuela.
Mayor, do we want to get out before public comment or?
That's right. Do we have public comment on this item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, do you have hands raised to make public comment of this item?
How many?
Seven so far.
All right. Let's hear from the public and then I'll turn to Councilmember Val.
Thank you. The first is Z. Wayne Johnson.
Good evening, councilmembers and mayor. Z. Wayne Johnson, I'm president of ROKA. Despite what the applicant has had to say, ROKA has never refused to meet with them. And in point of fact, after the first PUC meeting, we actually had a Zoom session with their prior representative, Mr. Savala, and as well as Mr. Ball in, in presence. ROKA is consistent in its concerns. It has worked very closely with SAC PD, with the outreach program, unified with various church entities and the like to deal and address the homeless problem around the various sections of, of the district, but also directly adjacent to the AMPM. You will see in some of the testimony that's been submitted where some of our volunteers that work with them have indicated where they've had direct conversations with homeless people who have said that more of them would have been there but for the fact that alcohol is not sold at the AMPM. On it. Further, you know, so again, you know, we, we have some difficulty believing in anything that Mr. Ball has to say, given the fact that we've been misrepresented several times at the PEC and now at this meeting about our willingness to participate, as well as the fact that, and going to be, PDC indicated that the entire community was gated and walled off, which it is not. Our comments are, are very clear, very detailed in what I submitted on behalf of the 2,000 rooftops, almost 2,000 rooftops within ROKA. On it, I submit those to you and ask that you give them all the due diligence and consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Katie Hanson.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I am Katie Hanson. I live in the Willow Creek neighborhood, right around the corner from the AMPM. And I am opposed to this item. Since working from home during COVID, I've noticed the high volume of students from Leroy Green walking over to the AMPM after school for soda and, for soda and snacks. Given the high volume of traffic from the local schools, I don't think it's appropriate for AMPM to have a liquor license. We already have a liquor store in our neighborhood and other stores close by, such as 49er Truck Stop, Grocery Outlet, and Bel Air that sell alcohol. We don't need another location selling beer and wine, especially one that is so heavily frequented by students after school. Thank you for your consideration.
Our next speaker is GNNA Board.
Hi. Good evening. I'm Marbella Sala and I live in Gardenland, North Gate, and I'm a member of the newly formed District 3. I'm here to ask you to deny the conditional permit request for alcohol sales at the Arco Orchard Station. Please honor your own staff report stating that selling beer and alcohol will not be consistent with the general plan. Your neighbor, your regulations stating alcohol is not to be sold near schools and parks and will also be disruptive to the public safety and harmony of our community. Please honor the multiple community requests to not sell alcohol at Arco Orchard and honor all the community voices. You will also be hearing from tonight and have received public comment, written comments again, opposing the selling of beer and wine. In closing, many times I've heard you all say you were elected by the people and for the people. Please serve our community and deny Arco's request. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is David Brady.
Good evening. I am a resident and past president of the River Oaks Community Association, ROKA. And I urge you to uphold the vote of the Planning and Design Commission to deny the CP for alcohol sales at this AMPM. Pardon me. Since that denial, the applicant has hired a prominent attorney and reputed expert, Dr. Alan Murray, to put together a collection of bar charts to try to negate the overwhelming sentiment of the community not to sell alcohol at this location. One of the things Dr. Murray included in his report was the white population in the vicinity. Why? Is the inference that residents would treat a business owner trying to sell alcohol next to our homes and schools differently if he is white? If so, I don't think that could be any further off base. In fact, you know what I didn't see in Dr. Murray's report? I don't see the race of Ray Enos, the developer who wanted to put an auto dealership in the middle of our neighborhood. ROKA objected to his project and as a result, we now have high quality multifamily housing and mixed use retail going in on the north side of West El Camino. Why? Because ROKA wanted something better for our community. I also don't see the race of Taylor Bollinger, whose company, Beezer Homes, putting thousands of dollars of upgraded landscaping and decorative sidewalks on the West El Camino Avenue 10 years before breaking ground on their first homes after negotiating these improvements with ROKA. Why? Because ROKA wanted something better for our community. And I don't see the race of David and Eve Justice, owners of the undeveloped properties surrounding the Arco on Orchard Lane, who last year had to remove several tons of debris generated by AMPM and the transients who frequent the establishment. ROKA has advocated with the city for years for the justices to clean up and maintain their property. Why? Because we want something better for our community. Now, I will admit, most of these property owners probably didn't appreciate ROKA's involvement in their plans.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
I, I want to just say that the, the current Arco owners have said that they just.
Comments. Our next speaker is Noel Mora.
Thank you and good evening, councilmembers, mayor. I am a member of the Natomas Community Association. And on behalf of the association, I'd like to ask that you vote to deny this item. And for the same reasons that other community leaders have mentioned and to keep our, the kids in our community safe. I'm also a Measure U Commissioner and South Natomas President. And I'd like to oppose this proposal also as an individual. Really because what I learned was there are a great number of locations that already sell alcohol in this specific area. And I think it's important for our neighborhoods to avoid the inevitable harmful externalities that will come with an oversaturation of alcohol vendors, which is really what we have at the moment. You can drive either way and, and either, you can drive in either direction for two or three minutes and, and be able to purchase alcohol. Additionally, these externalities especially affect youth, given the proximity of the location to schools. And I ask that you please vote to deny this item for those who live, for those of us who live in this vicinity, but also to set a precedent for the well being of other neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Patrick Perry.
Hello. Good evening, mayor and members of the council. I urge you to deny the applicant. I think you should not be concerned with the geospatial study of other sightings of this type of activity within the city and really concern yourself with, you know, studies and evidence that look at the association between alcohol and outlet density and adolescent alcohol abuse. There are reasons why the city has, and the ABC have guidelines on the books as to why these two should not mix. There, the union between alcohol sales and the presence of schoolchildren, there's no study that says this is a good thing. Nothing good can happen from that. You have a letter in your packet from the Thomas Unified School District Superintendent Chris Evans and the entire NUSD Board urging that this be rejected, and that should carry an enormous amount of weight when you have the superintendent of your local school district saying, please don't do this. This is not a good idea. Also wanted to address some of the other claims. While I can certainly be cognizant of the issues going on with the business there and, and lost revenue. When this purchase, when this was purchased in 2020, the, the applicant knew that there was no license existing and basing your economic projections based upon the fact that you assumed you were going to get a license is not really a valid reason to do this. That's not our particular problem. It costs $2 to $5 million to purchase an AMPM, so I doubt the applicant here is poor. Probably the biggest threat you're looking at is the 711 moving in across the street, who, by the way, has already agreed not to sell alcohol for the very same reasons the neighborhood has requested it to. The union of alcohol sales and the presence of children is a very bad idea. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Manuel Oliveras.
Hello, my name is Manuel Oliveras. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Great. Thank you for the time. I'm a resident here for the past five years, Navy veteran. And I do not want the easy access or easier access for alcohol for my children that attend both Two Rivers and Leroy Green. So I'm imposed of it. And I hope everyone continues to see the bigger picture that our children must come first over any amount of profit. So if I have to drive 10 miles for alcohol, I'd rather do that than provide an opportunity for something to happen or easy access or even any type of unfortunate things that can happen with alcohol. So I'm imposed of it and thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Leslie Gordon.
Yes, good evening. Thank you. My name is Leslie Gordon. I'm a 16 year resident here in the Willow Creek neighborhood. And I have two daughters, one that actually attends MP3 and one that still attends Two Rivers Elementary. And I'm in opposition of the approval of the alcohol permit. And I've actually spoken multiple times over the years. I opposed the initial building of the gas station and probably was pivotal in helping them have the original denial of the alcohol permit because of the proximity to the parks and the schools. And it seems like this issue comes up over and over again with the previous owner and the owner before them as well. I just feel like they haven't missed, they, they've misrepresented the neighborhood and said that, you know, we refuse to meet with them and it's, there's nothing further from the truth. Everybody is wanting this business to succeed and we understand what's going on. But it's also the business's responsibility to do their own due diligence when they set up within a community and also to work and partner with the community. And I don't think this is, these are the only issues. We've had neighbors that have had issues with the car wash and they've actually gone in and been met with indifference. There have been multiple homeless people that have been adjacent to the building. There's people that have been bringing their vans and parking them. And while I think the applicant may be working with local officials and the police and doing that, that's what a good neighbor is supposed to do. And so that means they should listen to the community when we say we don't want alcohol sales at this site. And then also in looking at the reports that the attorney actually put down, I'm a little offended that they said, oh, we'll, we'll actually provide specific financial support. So how would this business that's struggling provide financial support to the district and to nearby residents? So I, I just don't see this as a genuine act. This is just basically a money grab of the business. And hopefully we can see the city council actually just deny this permit. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Dawn Gibson. Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Dawn Gibson.
Uh, hello, my name is Dawn Gibson. I've been a resident of the neighborhood for the last eight years. Um, I'll just be brief and say I'm in opposition for many of the same reasons my previous neighbor spoke about. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Richard Kumar. Richard Kumar, if you'll unmute.
Can you hear me now?
We can.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to bring up the, where they had brought up the alcohol that's sold nearby, the homeless issue. Homeless should never be issued. There is no issue of homeless. There is alcohol sold within five minutes of it and there hasn't been issues of those. So why are you trying to stop the Arco AMPM to sell it at forty nine hours within about fifty feet of walking distance to purchase it? And the school and apartments and all these locations are near. This to me looked like it's kind of some kind of discrimination that's going on to stop them from selling alcohol. And I mean, the gas station needs alcohol, beer, wine, people are traveling for their family to get to home too. All those apart- apartments, complex, home, they need those. So it'd be nice to have alcohol, beer, wine nearby so people don't have to drive ten miles or fifteen miles to get in an accident. So it'd be a lot easier, a lot closer if they could just walk to the store, pick up and go home. Safest way to get alcohol. There's alcohol selling in surrounding areas, so why are you stopping this business to not to sell it? They should be selling it. They should not be stopped. So please permit them to sell alcohol and beer, wine. I mean, they are, they're providing, the owner owns about, uh, multi businesses. They're selling alcohol in other places. They haven't violated anything in other locations. West Sacramento, South Sacramento. You know, they, they have like three locations. They just gotta be a wine. So they should not be stopped and selling on this one. Please don't listen to where people are trying to avoid them having anybody making money. Businesses need to make money to pay bills. I appreciate it if you allow this to move forward and give them a permission to run and sell alcohol, beer, wine. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Rose Cabral.
Hello, everyone. Rose Cabral here from District Six. I, um, just wanted to hop on really quick and show, um, my support for the neighbors who are all calling in and, um, supportive their neighborhood. This, this actually reminds me of back in 2016 when my neighbors along Stockton Boulevard got together to oppose a change to, um, the conditional use permit for alcohol sales along Stockton Boulevard. So I just wanted to call in and show support for, um, my neighbor or, you know, the neighbors up in there who are, who are calling in for this item and, um, I also want to highlight the fact that this property was purchased at an auction by the developer who went bankrupt. And so like, how awesome would it be if it could have been purchased by the community and the community, community could decide what needs to happen to this land? We're not there now, but it's just thinking about the future, right? And thinking about what our goals are for our neighborhood and not doing this again in another five years. So thanks, everyone, for calling in. That was a little scattered because I didn't really, I wasn't prepared, but thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you for your comments. And our last speaker on this item is Sachiko Kanatsu. Sachiko Kanatsu. Maybe you'll unmute. Sachiko Kanatsu. Mr. Mayor, I've said, sent three requests to have, um, Sachiko unmute. It doesn't appear they're unmuting.
Okay. Then let us move on if, uh, the individual comes back on, uh, before the end of public testimony. I'm not sure if it's him or her. I'm sorry. We'll, we'll take the person. Is there anybody else?
I have no more hands raised to make public comment on this item.
All right. Thank you very much for the public testimony. Let's turn it over to Councilmember Valenzuela.
Uh, mayor, you do have a rebuttal.
Uh, yes, thank you for reminding me. I appreciate that. We do have a rebuttal first and then we'll turn it over to the councilman.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Steinberg, members of the council. Absolutely no intent of the owners of this station to diminish, you know, undermine, ignore, uh, the concerns of the, of the neighbors as stated. Concerns of the Neighborhood Association. And that's why frankly, the, the history of this ownership, uh, of good management of the site is important. Um, and, and of course, it's difficult. I, again, I, I would submit, uh, that the comments, the specific comments by those in opposition did not point to any specific, uh, evidence or any, anything that would actually show that, uh, granting this CUP for beer and wine sales, uh, could with any definite, uh, concern could lead to problems in the neighborhood for the schools, the parks. Um, and so I would ask you to, to give due consideration to the business needs of this applicant. Uh, in this particular economic time, it's been challenging to so many businesses. Uh, you know, which is really a very distinguishing characteristic, uh, from prior applications. Uh, again, I will stress this applicant was unaware of the history, uh, with the original developer and the second owner. Uh, and so was unaware, uh, of this, uh, uh, opposition by ROKA. And is not, did not bring this, uh, in some way, uh, you know, ignoring the, the interests and the concerns and really wants to work with the neighborhood.
Thank you, miss. Thank you so much, Mr. Barth. We appreciate it very much. Okay. For the fourth time.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, mayor. And, um, yeah, until just a couple of weeks ago, I was representing this area. And so I appreciate the chance to start off, having had the opportunity to talk to the applicant as well as the neighborhood several times about this project. So first, I just want to say I don't believe in lowest common denominator zoning. Um, just because something was allowed in one part of town doesn't mean it should automatically be allowed in another part of town. It's a very slippery slope. And it really kind of flies in the face of what we try to do. We update our general plans and our zoning to really set policy goals for the community. Um, I do also have to note, as my, uh, friend Rose Cabral noted, that several of the sites that were referenced in your presentation, Mr. Barth, actually are sites that have now led to things like special planning districts to restrict any more alcohol sales from coming into those corridors because they were really problematic sites and locations that caused a lot of problems in, in those neighborhoods that needed to be addressed through zoning changes. Um, secondly, just to put the community in context too, as some of the speakers said, this isn't an affluent community. This is a working class community and this intersection of Orchard Lane is one of the only safe crossings of West El Camino the whole way down the corridor, right? And we've got all this new development coming in on the north side. The county's planning a bunch more development over in the other side of, of AD. And so there's, there's going to be even more traffic. And so this is the only way that students can really cross the street safely is to literally walk right by this AMPM and walk to get to the schools. And they're pretty cut off from anything else because they've got the freeways on either side of them, right? So it's like, you're going to those parks, you're trying to go to the schools, you're trying to go to events. The only way to do that and maintain the walkability is to walk right by this location. Um, and so that's something that I think is really important to note. In addition to the fact, as the staff report said, two schools, three parks and multiple places already where you can buy alcohol, um, either for consumption or at home, at home use. So, um, this area I think has a lot of deep challenges already when it comes to, and I, and I just want to make clear that I don't blame the applicant. I think like Mr. Bar said, like, I think that he bought this location not knowing about the prior challenges. And honestly, that's something that I think is a city I'd like to see us improve in terms of how do we memorialize these conversations that happen when applications are get before, when development happens, when things happen at the city staff. So the staff turns over and neighborhood leaders and businesses, there's something memorialized that the public can see and understand what the history of that parcel or zoning decision was, that they're not walking in like that. But all told, you know, as much sympathy as I have for the owner and especially in COVID times, um, I have to really look at this in terms of suitability of the site. And, and when it's that close to that many schools, when it's right on the only safe path to get to those schools, when it's got it in a community that's already starting to see challenges from traffic of a really high capacity corridor that's only going to get more impacted and all the other things the neighbors have, have mentioned. Um, I would actually like to move that we open and close the public hearing and move the staff recommendation and findings to deny the appeal, um, for the conditional use permit at this location, um, and really hope that, um, my colleagues will join me in this. And I want to thank everybody for their engagement because like I said, both the applicant team and the neighborhood have been very open, very accessible, been very verbose in, in the different reasons. And I think this is just the only path forward that I feel good about, um, for the community. So thank you, mayor, um.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember Harris, uh, this is now your district.
Indeed it is. And what a joy I've inherited here. Uh, you know, I'm probably the fourth council member to deal with this very issue at this very site. Uh, I think Councilmember Valenzuela brought up a lot of salient points, but a, a couple of things I wanted to add. First, and this is not, um, to the detriment of the owner, um, Baldadwall, but were I to purchase a convenience store and gas station that did not have an alcohol sales permit, I really would have first and foremost done my due diligence to find out why there was not already existing a CUP. Uh, this has a long history going back to 2006, contested highly at the initial development of this site. Again, in 2009 and 2010, uh, at that time, the, the community opposition was fierce as it is now and it was in 2006. And, uh, the owner withdrew their application. So here we are again. I would have to say that this particular community has fought this and fought this. And they have fatigue from fighting it. It's frustrating to them certainly that this keeps coming back. And then of course, there is the idea that the, um, store across the street, uh, could apply for a CUP if this one is granted, but they have also negotiated with the Neighborhood Association and backed off from that application just based on the needs of this particular community. Those two things, uh, really affect my decision-making here. Also, I would say as a council member, I have had many incidents that have to do with alcohol sales at 7-Elevens and, um, uh, you know, the quick marks associated with, with alcohol sales. These kinds of problems do arise. There is no evidence to prove that it will arise at this location. But anecdotally, I understand the neighborhood's fears and I understand why they have a decided preference to not have alcohol sales at this site. Uh, you know, look, I'm new to this game, but I do represent River Oaks Community Association as well as GNNA and NCA and all of the Natomas associations at this point. Pretty much everybody's united in opposition to this particular CUP. And I will second Councilmember Valenzuela's motion.
All right. Thank you. I now see Vice Mayor Ashby. Who also previously represented the district, yes, the area.
I did. I did previously represent this community as well. I also lived there and my son went to Two Rivers. I am very familiar with the community. In fact, the photograph that the applicant put up of the AMPM store clearly shows both schools within the frame. You can see Leroy Green and Two Rivers even from that aerial view. I represented this site when I inherited it after, uh, Councilmember Trethway and Mayor Fargo fought off the auto mall. And that did come back while I was here. Community didn't want it. This AMPM, um, was, was very clear when it was allowed that there would not be alcohol there and it wouldn't be difficult to do the search, to hear the very heated conversations around the community. Many of the people who called in today are the same people who called in 10 years ago, trying to protect their community from that use. Because I live there, I can tell you there's actually alcohol right up the street, closer than some of the callers even said. There's a, there's a liquor, a dedicated liquor store right up the street. And the only thing that's changed from 10 years ago to now, there are really two things. Maybe three. One, the schools are more populated. Two, another store is coming in across the street, which has also been denied alcohol. And three, we have put in a lot of housing on the other side of the street, which means there are more children traversing that path, far more than there were even 10 years ago. So I do not think it is a good idea in any regard to add alcohol at this site. I think a simple search, looking at previous CUPs would have easily revealed that that was not going to happen at this site. And, um, I not only support Councilmember Valenzuela's motion, but I applaud the community, their persistence, their continued engagement in representation of themselves is laudable. And, uh, I'm, I'm proud to know them, proud to know many of those people who called in today. And, uh, and as Councilmember Harris also pointed out, you heard from a lot of people who don't live in ROKA because Natomas tends to stick together. So you heard from NCA, you heard from North Natomas folks and you heard from Gardenland folks. That's because they're all united on this issue. There are a hundred and 10,000 people in our city that live in Natomas and all of their associations agree that we should, as a city, continue to keep our promise, which was that we would not allow alcohol sales at this site nor across the street in an attempt to protect the kids and the community over there. So, uh, no.
Hey, thank you. Do we have any other, uh, comments from members of the council? I don't see any. Um, there has been a motion to open and close a public hearing and a, a motion to deny the appeal. It has been seconded, correct, Madam Clerk?
That's correct by Councilmember Harris.
All right, then let us, uh, call the roll, please.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloie?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilmember Chenier?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Gara?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
Mayor Steinberg?
Yes, that passes nine to nothing. Thank you for good public hearing here. Appreciate it. Let's move now to the next item, which is the solid waste rate adjudge- adjustment. That is item number thirteen.
Good evening, mayor and council. Um, I'm going to chair a screen here. John Thabo, General Manager of your Recycling and Solid Waste Division. To let me know when you see the garbage truck.
We see it.
Thank you. So we are here tonight with an ordinance to amend fees and charges for recycling and solid waste services. I wanted to start by giving, uh, the council a, uh, background on some of our core services. We provide garbage weekly collection, organics, weekly containerized collection, loosen the street, leaf season this time of year, uh, recycling every other week collection and street sweeping. Our division sweeps over a hundred fifty thousand miles of streets annually. Other services we provide, uh, battery oil, uh, appliance and e-waste pickup, household hazardous waste. There are three facilities residents can bring household hazardous waste to in the region. Appointment-based household junk collection, uh, two appointments per year. We do can retrieval for qualifying disabled customers and we manage the city's disaster debris management plan, which is, uh, keeps us in compliance with FEMA and CAL OES in the event of a natural disaster or something, uh, like a declared disaster. Additional programs, uh, public outreach and education. We do, uh, code enforcement team mostly focused on illegal dumping and mitigation of illegal dumping around the city. We maintain the old city landfill at 28th Street and the monitoring program there. And as well, we have a mattress collection program. Some of the challenges facing the Recycling Solid Waste Division, why we're here today for a rate adjustment, you, new yard waste and organics processing requirements and increased costs with the new Senate Bill 1383 program. I will get into that in a moment. Potential increase in recyclables processing markets go up and down as you probably know and have heard, and, uh, that could be a, a potential driver of future costs. Maintaining staffing and equipment levels, um, having some of the same issues, uh, with the labor shortage as, uh, other private and public sector. COVID-19 impacts I'll get into in a little bit in a moment and inflationary impact. This is a table that shows, um, with and without a rate adjustment, our five-year fund balance for the Recycling and Solid Waste Enterprise Fund. You can see on the left, uh, without a rate adjustment, we fall below our 90-day reserve in the coming fiscal year. And we continue to decline until 2025 when we can no longer fund our operation. On the right is with the- On the right is with the rate adjustment and program implementation. As you can see, we dipped for a moment, but come back up to a 90-day reserve, and we stabilize in the 24, 25, and 25, 26 fiscal years with over 90 days of prudent operating reserve. Senate Bill 1383, many of you aware of it, it is a state mandate requiring diversion of all organic material from landfills. The city has to divert all organics material, yard waste, from both commercial and residential sectors. We bear the cost of this implementation and all the ongoing compliance and reporting. Our plan is to implement citywide food waste collection from residential customers this summer, 2022. We participated in a regional request for proposals for processing of this material, and the city joined with the County of Sacramento and Folsom in an effort to reduce costs, combine our tonnage, economies of scale. And although it was competitively bid, the processing fees organics, for organics, increased from the $40 a ton range, as you can see on the left of the table, up to the $100 a ton range in the 25 and 26 fiscal years, as mostly with the addition of food waste and into the yard waste bin and the organics and the elevated levels of permitting that facilities need, and processing and pressing all the, processing all the material into compost. Similar table, which shows our expenses, annual yard waste and organics processing cost in millions of dollars per year. Again, you can see the two fiscal years on the left, where we are in the $3 million range for organics processing cost, and on the right, when we're up in the $9 million range after full implementation. And a $6 million hit on our enterprise fund just for processing costs. We are $65 million enterprise fund, so a $6 million increase in the processing is a 10% increase almost in our enterprise fund budget just to process the material. COVID-19 impacts in calendar year 2020, to the stay-at-home, where we saw a significant increase in residential disposal tonnage. You can see the numbers here, almost 11% in garbage, household junk, recycling, illegal dumping, all way up. This further deteriorates our bottom line, and we have not got the 2020, 21 numbers yet, but we expect them to be similar because of, you know, additional stay-at-home and the pandemic increasing our residential tonnage. And we get the same amount of revenue from our customers, but just more garbage and more recycling further deteriorates our bottom, bottom line. We were directed by council before coming back to complete citywide reroute and reorganization and and implement efficiencies. We've added a, we went from a four-day, 10-hour work week to a five-day, eight-hour work week in February 2021. The three organics agreements I mentioned with three different vendors are up to five years in length, and while the processing fees are higher, there are less vehicle miles traveled. We have three facilities we're delivering to strategically placed around the city, so it reduces fuel consumption and operational costs. We'll soon complete a construction of the compressed natural gas station at Meadowview Yard. This will have our own station at our own corporation yard and reduce our dependency on non-city stations, eliminates fuel surcharges, reduces our wait times, and increases our productivity. We've also added infrastructure in that project for future electric vehicle charging, hoping that in the next decade or so, we would be possibly looking at electric garbage trucks. We have converted approximately 85% of our collection fleet to CNG. We are looking at ordering an electric side loader for testing evaluation in the next year. Our new collection vehicles are equipped with onboard scales, where that allows a truck to stay on route right up until its legal limit, reduces our overweight vehicles, it further reduces our vehicle miles traveled, and we're more efficient because we're increasing our time on the route. Finally, we've implemented an updated GPS monitoring software to increase safety and efficiency and in compliance with USDOT regs. We can tell speeds our trucks are going, how long they idle for, and the routes they take as they go through the neighborhoods. Additional enhanced service and benefits from this rate adjustment. We wanted to highlight some of the things residents will experience and not just the rate adjustment, but we offer tenant household junk pickup, as I noted, two household junk pickup appointments per year, and we now allow tenants to make those appointments, not just the owners. We think that's better access to our services and helps reduce illegal dumping in the long run. We balanced with this rate adjustment our solid waste fund relative to those increases I showed from the pandemic, and we replenish our long-term reserve to that 90-day prudent operating reserve in the event of a natural disaster or something that compromises our ability to collect refuse or to collect revenue. We are processing organics into compost is a significant benefit from this rate adjustment, reducing our GHG emissions, and it is significant progress towards the city's climate action plan goals. Food waste recycling, residents will be able to recycle food waste and food soil paper into their current yard waste container beginning this summer, 2022. We're going to be rolling out that program. Customers will be able to receive a kitchen countertop caddy for food waste, like the one in the photo there on the left. We're going to be giving them out at the community centers, all in the map on the right, and customers can go and pick up their countertop caddy, educational material, and their first bag of, the first box of compostable bags to get familiar with the program and recycling food waste. Other enhanced services, we still do curbside oil and filter recycling available by appointment. We intend to maintain a four-week street sweeping service. We're implementing that this coming year, going from six-week street sweeping down to four. Diversification of our fleet, a healthy enterprise fund allows us to pursue electric garbage trucks, look at narrow street sweepers perhaps for bike lanes or to increase transit-oriented development, give us more diversity with servicing the city and different types of development. We're also planning a customer survey in fiscal year 22, 23 to determine customer support for a rate adjustment that would result in going back to weekly recycling service. We did a survey in 2018, and customers in general were not in support of the adjustment, but we do want to revisit that. Next fiscal year, customers who do need more recycling can get a second 90-gallon can and then have that much capacity to just got to put out two cans every other week for about a $2 charge. They can, customers that need more recycling can get a second can. So a little bit about greenhouse gas emissions from the organics recycle program. On the left is our land application, our prior method of recycling, and while we've already implemented, which is phase one and going to composting, and you can see the greenhouse gas benefits from that, and then phase two on the right shows when we, this year, when we implement food waste collection and we actually take food waste out of landfills and compost it as well. So composting of yard waste and food waste together saves over 31,000 metric tons of GHG emissions. This table shows the same numbers in a table format and also discusses the social and economic impact of these emissions. It does have a quantifiable number estimated at $162 per ton, and therefore diverting 31,000 metric tons of GHG results in a social savings of more than $5 million annually. Here is the proposed monthly variance, our rate adjustment. On the left, you see the implementation dates of April 1st, 2022, and then January 1st, 2023, and January 1st, 2024. We've flattened these rates to a $3.83 per month increase three times in with those implementation dates on the left for a total of $11.49 total increase. The proposed rate in the middle shows our 4259 going to 5408, and this is for a 64-gallon container. We, residents can reduce their rate slightly with a variable can rate and get a smaller garbage can, or increase it slightly if they need more service with a larger garbage can. But for convenience and ease of presentation, we're showing our standard service there in the middle, which is the 64-gallon container. A food waste-only container, the bottom table is for, we have about 12,000 of our 138,000 customers that are currently green waste exempt. They don't have a can because either their HOA collects green waste or it's an immature tree canopy and not a lot of yard waste. They will no longer be exempt in the new program, so that will be their rate for a small container. We're going to give them a narrow 35-gallon container for food waste and incidental organics. This is the rate adjustment by percentage. As you can see, the 8.99, 8.25, and 7.62 across the top, 26.98 total. As I mentioned earlier, 10% would be just the processing costs and the $6 million increase to process the combined stream of organics that we'll be collecting with the new program. On the bottom, the solid waste fund summary shows those same percentages, and at the very bottom, you see the 90-day reserve that we achieve and the prudent operating reserve we get back by implementing the rate adjustment. This is a table that shows current and proposed solid waste monthly rates comparison with some of the other jurisdictions around the region, and on the right, some of the jurisdictions that in the East Bay that I have actually implemented the program already. We do have a rate assistance program, the Sacramento Utility Rate Assistance Sure Program has approximately 8,500 participants as of September of last year. This shows the current budget. Participants receive discounted rates for water, wastewater, and recycling and solid waste. Customers need to renew every year through SMD and confirm, reconfirm their eligibility. The sure program is managed by the city's Department of Utilities. Some of our customer outreach for this mailer and for the new program, we sent out 138,000 notices to customers back in October, printed and online instructions for accessing the information in all those languages you see there, and an informational flyer that provided customers with a Spanish translation and was also posted to our website. Both the Recycling Solid Waste Division and Cities 311 have contracts that allow us to use Language World. They're a local interpretation service company, and if anyone calls in speaking any of those language, we can get somebody on the phone to interpret and explain to them what this all means. Social media posts on the rate adjustment and hearing were posted on our Twitter, Facebook, and Instagram accounts as well. We have a dedicated website for organics, a new website for the organics waste program, and we offered community meetings. Almost 100 neighborhood associations and interested environmental groups were offered similar presentation to this one. We've given at least 30 presentations to neighborhood associations all over the city. It impacts if the rate is not approved. The Recycling and Solid Waste Fund falls below its 90-day reserve next year, this coming fiscal year, and we become insolvent by 2025. Future rate adjustments then need to be larger to recover from the deficit and reestablish that prudent operating reserve. We could face regulatory penalties for failing to comply with Senate Bill 1383. Our refused vehicles don't get replaced on schedule. Our maintenance costs can increase. We could have more service day interruptions, and overtime goes up. Summary, this rate adjustment was presented to the city's Utility Rate Advisory Commission, including two presentations and a public hearing. The Urack voted unanimously to approve the rate adjustment. We have there also the validated written protest. We received 195 total, which is 0.15% of our customer base. More than half of this rate adjustment is to comply with Senate Bill 1383 and to implement our division's contribution to the city's climate action plan. It's a good time to note that if during the Q and A, you have questions about the greenhouse gas emission data, Jennifer Venema, our Sustainability Manager, is on the call and has been somewhat involved with reviewing the numbers and what we've presented here. The remaining portion of the adjustment is to address the inflationary increases noted and for anticipated increases in wages under our next labor agreement. Failure to implement the program could result in regulatory issues and enforcement with the state. The bad part about that is we still end up implementing the program with the same costs of the program, but at an even higher cost overall, since the compliance process can be costly. I should also note a good time here that we do have a representative from Cal Recycle available for question and answer. Kara Morgan is our branch chief for our local assistance and market development branch of Cal Recycle and is available. She have questions about Senate Bill 1383. The proposed program completes the fork-to-farm loop. We are the farm-to-fork capital, and now our food waste will actually be recycled and reused as a soil amendment and compost. We have an active rate assistance program, as I noted, sure, for qualifying customers, and Department of Utilities is present should you have questions about that. And finally, this rate adjustment is in line with similar rate adjustments being implemented all over California, locally, Sac County, Folsom, all the other jurisdictions that county and counties and cities around the state are all looking at similar-sized adjustments for Senate Bill 1383 programs. That is the end of the formal presentation, but happy to reshare some of the slides if you like or answer questions.
John, let me compliment you on a really thorough presentation. Now, this is important. This is something that affects all of our rate payers, and it affects our city's commitment to the climate imperative as well, and I really appreciate the thoroughness of presentation and how you laid it out. So why don't we hear from the public first, and then we will turn it over to the city council. How many callers do we have, Madam Clerk?
I have two callers, Mr. Mayor. The first is Neil Edgar.
Mayor, City Council Members, my name is Evan Edgar, Neil Edgar's younger brother. We're located at the Edgar Institute at 1822 21st Street, Sacramento, California, for the last 15 years. I'm the engineer for the California Compost Coalition, which is a statewide compost organization supporting the development of the compost infrastructure, and we are supporter of today's staff recommendation. SB 1383 is a huge lift, 75% of all organics out of the landfill by 2025, and is a climate change law, not just another recycling law. As a program was designed, it will reduce vehicle miles traveled, reduce methane at the landfill, and avoid a lot of greenhouse gas emissions. I do this statewide throughout California, representing over 50 haulers and many facilities. And what we're seeing statewide is about an average of 28% rate increase for SB 1383 and and the China Sword with regards to commodity pricing that is part of the the rate increase. All communities are facing this type of increase. All communities are developing compost infrastructures. And I got to commend the city council to break an away from law in order to have your own RFP for the city and actually develop compost in Sacramento County. The ours are the city of the trees that create a lot of organics, form the fork that we need healthy soils in order to grow our organic food. So I commend Sac City to have an RFP, and we're working on the Sacramento Carbon Project, where we're taking this compost and putting it on the rangelands up near Rancho Marietta, and we have some other projects proposed where we have a Sacramento Carbon Project to sequester carbon that is produced in Sacramento, to stay in Sacramento for healthy soils and healthy climate. Thank you very much.
Thank you for comments. Our next speaker is Barry Boyd.
Good evening. Thank you. Just dropped my notes here. I do have a couple of questions, and the questions are the, well, let me start with the first one. Why wasn't there, unless I missed it, I did hear the presenter state that there's information to send in your position, an individual's position on their website, but as I'm reading the physical letter here, it states that the, if you have an, if you would like to submit a written protest, it has to be mailed in, and there is no option to do that online, and especially in the midst of a worldwide pandemic, one would think, give the citizens an option not to have to leave their home to go into a post office to make this, to make their opinion heard. So again, opening up an option to do this, submit your protest online would be fantastic. Next, I have a question. Where are the three vendor locations that the food waste is being dumped at now, the food waste separation for the commercial businesses, excuse me, businesses that started January 1? And where is the location of the aerobic digester in plain language, the food composting site for Sacramento? There, I've heard discussions that the aerobic digester, the food compost composting site will be at the old Campbell Soup Plant. They're on 47th Avenue between 24th Street and Franklin in South Sacramento. Could you confirm these locations, please? Thank you.
I'd give your comments. Next speaker is Alexandrina Chavez.
Hello, my name's Alexandrina Chavez. I'm a policy associate with Californians Against Waste. Speaking on Speaking on behalf of Californians Against Waste, I would like to express our strong support of this proposed rates. To implement S B thirteen eighty three programs by the Utility Rate Advisory Commission. As evident in the five year fund balance of these programs. You can see that the city of Sacramento is already posed to miss implementation deadline for S B thirteen eighty three by six months. Opening the city up for fines of up to ten thousand dollars per day from Cal Recycle. That can total up to a potential one point eight million in costs regarding fines, and these are fines that the city of Sacramento cannot afford. S B thirteen eighty three was signed into law in twenty sixteen by Governor Brown. Establishing methane emissions reduction targets in a statewide effort to reduce emissions of short lived climate pollutants. With that, S B thirteen eighty three establishes targets to achieve a seventy five percent reduction in the disposal of organic waste by twenty twenty five. The salvation of these mandatory programs is proven to promote the development of progressing and recycling. Infrastructure and the adjusting of rates to ensure the success of these programs is an essential first step for the city of Sacramento. In addition, the diversion of organic waste towards composting creates an increase in local jobs compared to landfilling them as it is more effort. To make a quality soil amendment than to bury organic waste in a landfill where it emits greenhouse gases. Commercial and resident organics programs have been proven successful in cities around the country, including most of the Bay Area and several in the Sacramento region. And with that, Californians Waste's confidence suggests to prove to build both economic and environmental success, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Mayor, I have no additional speakers.
Right, well, thank you for the members of the public for calling in, let's hear from colleagues now, Councilmember Mayor Protem Getta. Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Bang. And anybody else, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, first, let me just thank the staff here, John and Aaron and your whole team who've been involved in this. You know, to do this and move where we are today, the council, I know I recall the council giving very strong direction about this. Rate assistance and figuring out how do we move forward with a number of challenging goals. One, this is a state requirement, and as you pointed out. If we don't move forward with this, then we'll likely be compelled to do it. And may have to do it with steeper jump and steeper increases that would affect all of our residents who. In our city and 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 rate payers here. Second, you know, we have a we have a. In challenge with the mission.
I think there's something going on with your internet. Is it just me or is it everybody?
It's everybody.
Okay.
Is it everybody?
Yeah, Eric, I'm sorry, we're just you're you're frozen on the screen and.
Mayor Protem, you might want to just turn off your camera, it might help with the.
Yeah, try try turn it off.
So so perfect, so thank you, I appreciate that. And and so having to do this ordinance, respond to changing the fee structure so that you spread it out in in a way that's. That's equitable and fair and also doing at a time when we dissolve the solid waste authority and and. Basically, also have to be required to begin a new entity. You know, I I want to thank the staff a lot because this has been a lot during this time to be able to accomplish it. So first, let's let's start with that. The second piece I'd like to say is, I think, you know, one thing we want to continue to explore more is further outreach, particular. And multiple languages, I would think we've done tremendous work on the number of language on the rate assistance program. Being able to get that out in our community as well. So with that, I'd like to move this item. For mayor, public hearing, move the item, but also the fraction here. This proposal is looking at our fleets. And I'd like to ask that our staff reach out to the California Mobility Center and ensure that as we look at our own fleets. That we're also working in partnership with our managers in the area so that we can continue to. Create this manufacturing industry where we have a, I know a prototype that's that's going to be unveiled in Sacramento in March. At one of the events here, smud is working on a heavy duty, a heavy vehicle partnership also as well. We should be involved in also creating a new export or a new industry here in Sacramento when it comes to this. Because other cities are going to be compelled to comply and change in their areas. Second, I would like to say that, you know, we we want to make sure that with the new technology that's coming around, someone brought up the biodigester. That we start looking at as these contracts phase out, right now, we're trucking all of this organics to our three other locations now. The the good thing is we've looked at local areas that are within our our region to to use for composting. But if there's an opportunity to use biodigesters here. And already, we know that our entities like Republic Service are using organic separators to be able to separate all of our. You know, the waste that's coming out so that we can even get a finer amount of organics. And we should be leaning into the technology and the innovation of of solid waste here moving forward. So with that direction, you know, Mr. City Manager, I'd like to make sure that we make sure that we not only comply with our state requirements. But making sure that we have our economic development departments looking at where can the city of Sacramento also create the new enterprises here in our region to help better our economy as well. So with that, open and close the public hearing and move the move the staff report.
Very good, thank you, Mayor Protem, Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. John, I'd like to thank you on a really great presentation, but be aware those thanks go to. John Connerly and Aaron Tredwell and also Jerome, God bless him, wherever he's run off to. This was a lot of work. The bottom line is it costs more to do the right thing. And state law is now compelling us to move in a in a better direction. Certainly in terms of greenhouse gas emissions, and I welcome that change. It's not an extraordinary increase, it's going to be a little painful for some of our constituents. But that's why we have the sure program. And we need to look at, you know, what the ramifications of this rate increase will be. For a certain number of people in our city that it might create financial hardship for. John, there is one piece of information in your really thorough report, and you and I spoke about this privately. I would like the the council to understand that our rates are actually going to be are and are going to be slightly higher than some of the jurisdictions within Sacramento County. Noticeably Rancho, Citrus Heights, maybe Folsom. And we had discussed the reasons why that is that our rates are somewhat higher than our immediate neighbors. Can you just kind of run down that, let me for my colleagues, it's pertinent information, but. It's certainly not a dissuader for me and and actually I want to take this opportunity to second Councilmember Garrett's motion. John?
Sure, thank you, Councilman Harris, so a couple of things, one, being the oldest city of all the cities in the region, we do have legacy costs. We, the old twenty eighth street landfill, as you know, where, for example, closing a landfill site next year, three and a half million dollars. That was operated in the fifties and we were the only landfill site in the region, so we have more legacy costs than all those new jurisdictions. That have incorporated recently. That as well as our waste management contract, which was implemented about ten years ago before anyone on this council was on the council. And actually, is we're paying more for our refuse than than the other jurisdictions because of that agreement. And it's got a fairly high tonnage rate, but it doesn't pay, we did an analysis on possibly buying it out and it doesn't pay to do that either. So those are probably probably the two primary reasons I'd say our rates are higher.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and then just to clear up the question that Mr. Boyd raised. Is there going to be any composting at the Campbell Soup Site?
Not that I know of in terms of a digester there, there used to be a digester at the South Area Transfer Station at Fruit Ridge Road. And but not to my knowledge at this point, our material sixty percent of material go is handled in the South Area, but over on Elder Creek. Transfer Station and the other ones are in the North and South, he asked about the three different locations, we go to the North Area Recovery Station. Working with our partners at the county and some of our stuff in the western portion of the city goes right off route to Yolo, which has a outstanding composting operation right there.
All right, well, thank you again, I congratulate staff on your really hard work on this, I know the negotiations have been long and kind of difficult. Overall, I think you've you've come back with a real good solution for us. You know, and and frankly, I look forward to all that green waste getting composted. Thank you, John, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember Bang.
Thanks, Mayor. First, I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank John, thank you so much for your presentation, Erin, Bill and Jennifer, just for all the great work that y'all are doing internally. I know as staff shared, you know, we are bearing the cost of implementation for S B thirteen eighty three. And I think I do believe that the increases is going to help us begin to do this work to make sure we're in alignment with state law. Councilmember Gary and Councilmember Harris did already elevate some of the items that I wanted to mention, especially around. Transition to our electric fleet and also gas house emission, but I did just have one practical question. You know, a large part of implementation is really about behavior behavioral change. And I know that residents are going to be encouraged to compost their own food with the yard waste bin. But I wanted to ask, how are we confirming and monitoring that residents don't actually put food waste into the garbage? And also like what strategies are we going to be undertaking to ensure that we could move forward with with the implementation in terms of outreach?
Sure, I'd be happy to answer that, so our contractors actually process the material before they bid on our projects. They got very familiar with our material because they worked with our previous contractor. And a lot of that happens at the facilities and they'll take photos and they can actually. You know, i- if contamination is very bad, there are, well, you know, methods where they can rectify it and get, you know, for individual loads, a little more money to deal with that. And have to take photos, but at that same time, give us the truck number, which gives us the route number so we can go trace back. Into the community and look at targeted education on certain routes that may be problem areas. So it's going to be working with our contractors and they're all, you know, we have the same basically interests in line, which is keeping the material as clean as possible. So that the, you know, that the compost is as clean and high quality as possible.
Awesome, thanks, John, really appreciate that insight, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
I've been Mayor Protem so long that I still can't even hear Vice Mayor, you say it every time, it takes me a minute, sorry.
That's okay.
I just, I I don't know why I feel compelled to do this, but I do. Every time this comes up or something around this comes up, I feel so compelled to defend city staff by saying. The worst decision ever was made a long time ago by the city when they sold the transfer station, and I know Councilmember Harris talked a little bit about this. And they didn't include a clause where they could buy it back and then their own contracts were used against them, et cetera, et cetera, we don't need to rehash history, but. I still, after this is my twelfth year on this council, I would still count that I wasn't here when it happened, I got here right after it happened. Suffered through the consequences of learning that they hadn't put the right of first refusal into the contract. And I still think that's probably the worst decision that I've seen made by the Sacramento City Council over the years. Because it has hurt our rate payers so much, it's why we have every other week recycle, it's why you guys are here doing this thing. And it's complicated and it's hard, but we no longer control those rates and. You know, I think it was just terrible, so I know it has not, it has everything to do with tonight and also nothing we can do about it, but I feel so compelled to bring it up because. I feel like if I were a person watching this or reading about it or seeing it on the news, I would wonder, how did they let it, how did this happen? Why are they, why is this happening so quickly, it really hasn't been, there's been excellent stewardship since then. To try and mitigate, try and mitigate, but at some point, that just is going to have to be addressed. And so I appreciate you, John, doing the best you can to show us what that mitigation looks like. And having good partners and Kara, you guys, thank you so much for everything that you're doing to help explain it to the rate users, the 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 rate payers and the users. And thanks for making the rounds through our communities and our neighborhoods. It is not an easy message to try to deliver or explain. But I appreciate that we have you guys out there trying to do it for us, so thank you.
Thank you, I would only add that I think you found. The right balance in the best that you could because these are rate increases, no question. But you avoided the rate shock while ensuring that the city complies with a very, very important state law. I just think it's really important that we be consistent as a city around climate. We were last week, we will be again this week. And every opportunity we have to be able to push our climate agenda so that we. Get as close to carbon neutrality as we can as quickly as possible. That's going to be the capital city of the state of California's contribution to a a national and an international crisis. So this is important and it's important that we vote yes. Let's call the roll.
Vice Mayor Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloie?
Hi.
Councilmember Harris?
Hi.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilmember Chenier?
Hi.
Council, Mayor Protem Getta?
Hi.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember, thank you, Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
Mayor Steinberg?
Yes, pass the nine to nothing, thank you again, John, to you and your team, good solid work.
Thank you all, thank you.
Very good, let's move to the next item, that's item fourteen.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, I have, I'm Shelley Banks Robinson, your H R Director, I have a very short presentation for you. The first thing I wanted to comment is that this is requiring a two thirds vote because it is a labor agreement and we are asking, it requires a two thirds vote. To.
Ms. Banks Robinson?
Sorry.
Ms. Banks Robinson, the city attorney has weighed in today that it does not require a two thirds vote?
It does not.
It does not, that's correct, it just needs a majority.
Okay, great, then I'll go to my very.
Two thirds is always better than a majority.
I'll go to my very short presentation. This item comes before you as a discussion item because California Government Code five four nine five three. Requires that prior to taking final action, there must be an oral report with a summary of recommendation for final action on salaries, salary schedules or compensation paid. In the form of fringe benefits of a local agency executive during an open meeting in which final action is to be taken. The local agency executive included in this report is the city manager. As stated in the report, the city manager's employment agreement is being amended to eliminate a cash severance payment. Except to include a cash payment equal to the cost of maintaining health benefits for the city manager and his dependents for one year. In addition, the employment agreement will be amended to include one year plus thirty days of leave balances for the city manager. And that is the end of my presentation.
Okay, is there public testimony on the item?
I have one hand raised to make public testimony, it's a phone number, last four digits, four three six six.
Okay.
Phone number, last four digits, four three six six, Mr. Davis? Phone number four three six six, if you'll unmute.
Mr. Davis? Okay.
It does not appear as unmuting.
Then let us let us move to the city council then, I see Councilmember Harris.
Well, Mayor, this one's kind of easy, I would like to move the resolution to allow you to execute an amended deployment agreement with our city manager.
Second.
All right, please call the roll. Madam Clerk?
I'm Vice Mayor Ashby?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes.
Councilmember Chenier.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Gueda.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Vang.
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Yes. Thank you. That passes nine to nothing. Members, that concludes the agenda for this evening. Are there members of the public who wish to speak on items not on the agenda?
Yes, Mayor, I have two hands raised. The first is a phone number, last four digits, 4366. Mr. Davis, if y'all unmute.
Hello?
Yeah, okay.
Yes, this is Lambert, and I, I did have my hand up when it pertained to the city manager. And I don't know what happened. Maybe it's a technical problem, but I can speak on it now.
Well, it already, it already passed, Mr. Davis, nine to nothing, but you're welcome to speak on any item.
Oh, that's okay. What I wanted to say is that as a person who voted for Measure A and also Proposition 16, I'm against any raise for this current city manager. I don't think he should ever receive any raises because of his history in the city manager's office, especially when it comes to the Davis family's paperwork.
Mr. Davis, let, let's try not to make it personal, okay? Let's try not to make it personal. I don't think it, it's a good thing for you. And let, let's not do that, please.
Well, well, let me, let me just state what I have to state. It's not, it's not personal from me. It's affecting my family. Now, I'm asking the city, I'm asking the mayor and the city council, and I've asked this many times. It was stated in November that you received a memo, and the Davis family has not received that memo. But I tell you what we have received. Shout out to the records department at City Hall because they have confirmed they are researching that whatever was sent to you. And so that is a violation of the Brown Act. And you can say personal if you want to, but I'm the one, and my family's the one that filled out that paperwork. We don't have five assistant city managers. We don't have all of that.
Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yeah, I feel like my time was shortened tonight because I didn't get to speak while Mayor Steinberg was giving me instructions.
That's right. You should give him another 30 seconds because I did interrupt him. So go ahead.
Yeah, I'm, to me, when someone's voted citywide, like the mayor, he should be the highest paid. I don't believe anyone should be more paid than the mayor. That's why I voted for Proposition Measure A and Proposition 16 because of the arrogance of the city manager's office. And that's 30 seconds.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Joe Smith.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. This is Joe Smith. I'm the advocacy director with Sacramento Loves and Fishes, and I didn't prepare anything formal tonight. I just want to kind of speak to you from my heart a little bit. Tomorrow will be the year anniversary since a horrible storm came to Sacramento, high winds and rain. It was a year ago, it'll be a year ago, Mayor, that I, I was receiving phone calls and texts, and I, from people all around experiencing homelessness, who were losing everything, who were scared, who thought they were going to die that night. And turns out some of them did, and many people lost everything they had. The bee called it a night of terror, and I'm not really big on like bold headlines like that. But when I went out into the community the next day, that's, that's what happened. It was a night of terror for people. And, you know, I know it's been a year, and I've been reflecting a lot on where we've come since then as a community altogether. And I don't want to speak for everybody, but I could probably speak for a lot of us in saying I, we, we had all hoped things would be a little different by now, and, and solutions would be a little further down the line. And I think we still have a whole lot of work to do, but I could not let this go by without taking that moment to remember that night, to, to remember the people who lost their lives that night, and really the people, the 195 people that, that died while experiencing homelessness over the last year. So I use this kind of thing as kind of a demarcation point, you know, to take that look back and, and use this as, you know, a greater call to action come tomorrow morning to work so hard for the people who have very little and no homes. So thank you for letting me speak. Good night.
Thank you, Joe. Don't lose heart. Don't give up. Don't give up. Okay, council ideas and questions. Councilmember Laloe?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick statement. As you saw, item number 15, we, we were withdrawing the call-up. And I wanted to just thank Reyna Rome and her team for being stellar individuals and core applicants. You know, I've, I've learned a, a lot, and if there are examples that rise to the top, and Uproar Farms and BLK Solutions are two core brands that come to mind that did, did the work and engaged the community to advance their project. There were some concerns raised by the community, but Uproar did the work and engaged them, and not only answered their questions, but also made commitment to improve the neighborhood and community. So I am definitely in support of their vision and leadership. Of course, we have a lot of work to do as it relates to Core, but we have examples in Uproar, and I wish them nothing but the best and success in coming years. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Harris?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. A couple of brief announcements. Stanford Settlement will be holding a COVID vaccine and testing clinic Saturday, January 29th, from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. For more information, visit the Stanford Settlement website. Also want to point out that Joey's Food Locker will be continuing their weekly food distribution every Friday, every Friday, from 4:00 till 5:30 PM at Natomas High School. Oh, what a great outfit Joey's is. They sure feed a lot of people. They accept monetary and food contributions, and there are volunteer opportunities available. For more information, visit my District Three website. And I'd also like to thank a fellow in our, our building department, Rob Hudson, the chief inspector, who has been very gracious to help me as an amateur plumber figure out how to accurately and correctly install a sewer line. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. Sean, did you have another comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay. Members, if there is nothing else, let us adjourn in the memory of two public servants, Elk Grove Police Officer Ty Lanahan and Twin Rivers Trustee and Education Advocate Bob Bastian. May their memories be a blessing, and may we continue our work in their honor. There's nothing else to come before us. We are adjourned. Thank you.